To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nick.
Definitely, Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for all the many blessings that you've given each one of us. God, we thank you that we live in a nation, God, where we have the freedoms that we enjoy. God, we pray that you would just continue to protect those freedoms. And God, I pray that you would be with us tonight as we meet and we discuss school business. I pray that you would give us wisdom and just help us understand that, God, the decisions we make affect the next generation. And God, I just pray that you would be with all the teachers and administration and, God, that you would give them what they need each and every day to further the education of these young people. God, I pray that you just bless this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we call to the January ninth, 2023, municipal board meeting to order. We do have a forum and we want to welcome our guests and employees.
Great, thank you. First item on our agenda is the consent agenda. It has the meeting agenda for tonight, the minutes from the last meeting, and then district financial report. We entertain a motion.
Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Oh, my, the motion?
Motion by Josh.
I'll say.
Second by Nick. All in favor?
Okay, next item is our special reports, and this month is school board appreciation month. You had in front of you and now behind you, most of you put them. Lots of little goodies. You know, school board is an unpaid duty that is trying at times, and we know that you all went through a lot to get here and go through a lot in general. And we appreciate all that you do for the guidance and just the work that you put in to help set up, set our school and set it on a good, correct path. And that was just a little bit of appreciation for us, from us for that. We had, you had just a plethora of different things, from certificates to hand, you know, student things that they had made for you. So we greatly appreciate what you do.
Thank you, guys.
So, second thing in our special reports is our school resource officer appreciation. They will, their actual day is before our next board meeting, so I, and this is Law Enforcement Day, so this was kind of a good day to do this, I thought. But we also appreciate our school resource officers and what they do. They have a tough task and a tough job on a day-in, day-out basis. They handle a lot of different things and they, they do it well. And we appreciate what they do. We have some goodies over here back behind here for you as well, before you leave. But we appreciate them for what they do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you want to stand up and say anything? Have you got anything you'd like to say?
No, I just, I appreciate all of y'all and thank you for being patient and working with us. And we appreciate all y'all.
Well, I, for one, have worn a badge. And it was a whole different world back before eight, nine years ago when the war on cops started. So I tip my hat to you all, whether it's in school or out on the street. You have my utmost respect because I have been there.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent reports. We have the financial projection report for you to look over. Our revenue was down a little bit in December. We did get a, if I'm standing correct, if I'm wrong, we did get a little bit more tax revenue, but it came in January. It was not at normal time. Is everything else? Go ahead.
It came in the tail end of December, but of course, we were out for break, and it is in check form. So it won't be deposited, it didn't get deposited into the bank until after the first year. So it'll show in January, you know, at our next meeting instead of showing in December. And I'm not going, I don't know exactly how much it was, but I know it was a little over a hundred thousand dollars. I wonder, but I can't remember. So, so there is some tax revenue there that just didn't make it in December's revenue.
But you can kind of see, based off of November and then December, you know, the big difference in tax revenue that shows on the top line there. And that's, I don't know if that's typical, but it is, it is a reduction generally from year to year from December. So unless there are questions, I'll go on to the enrollment report. And I went ahead, you know, I ran this last week. And then I went ahead and ran it again today because this is a timeframe in January where typically some movement. And last week, last week was the, I actually ran it on the, this would have been the second day back for kids. So I wanted to see if there was any difference, and there wasn't. So it's, the numbers were the same. Current enrollment for, for January fourth was two thousand two hundred and seventy-six. Enrollment at the last board meeting last year was two thousand two hundred and eleven. You know, that's our three-quarter average daily membership still there. You know, we had a loss and gain from each building from the previous month, but overall, we stayed fairly consistent and went up a few students in general. So the growth has, has stayed steady for right now.
And you've been up about sixty-seven kids, so since the beginning of the year, seems like average sixty-five. That's good.
This would be for the elementary people. Is there anybody that, because of the enrollment and it being up, that we're kind of in a tight bind yet? Nope, we're good?
Unless there are questions, I'll move on to the administration report. Start with Ferguson, if that's all right?
Sure. Yeah, this, starting out this month, I spent some time really setting down with my schedule. Just felt like last semester I didn't do as good as I wanted to getting into PLCs and things like that. So definitely organizing my calendar a little more so that I can be more involved in those PLCs and showing up for those principals, being able to support any way that I can. So just working on that. Just coming back from a training today that was really good. Got to meet with a lot of superintendents, assistant superintendents, and a lot of good information there. We will be having our wellness, our quarterly wellness meeting. Again, I believe it's actually after our next board meeting, but maybe the second week of February we'll be doing that. Looking forward to this semester.
We've been busy in the technology world. It never slows down. You know, we were able to get a lot of projects knocked out over Christmas break, and I appreciate the guys working over break for that. I just want to give a shout out to them, the tumblers that you have in front of you. We were able to engrave using our technology here in the district. So that's kind of a fun way that we get to spotlight the technology that we use. We, we have the engraver and we use it for engraving our equipment and that kind of stuff. And so anyways, that was kind of a cool little way to highlight that, what we have capable here in the district. Right now, big on topic and across the state is cybersecurity. And so we are going through that and doing everything we can to, to make sure that we have a hardened network and that we're, we're doing best practices, which means that it'll cut into a little bit convenience for some of our users. But, you know, I don't know if you've been seeing on the news, but a lot of schools in Arkansas have been getting hit with ransomware and cyber attacks. You know, Little Rock School District, what, in November, I think they paid $250,000 ransom for their information. Berryville just got hit at the first of December and their network was down for a week or two, I think. So we're doing everything we can to prevent that happening here in Huntsville. So that's really on my horizon right now. That's been a focus of the last couple of weeks for me is making sure that we're doing everything we can to prevent that. And working on how we can train our end users and kind of help implement that. That's all I have.
It was quite an interesting time off during break. Really, really cold. We had four incidents. We had water leaks and we had one in St. Paul in the middle school upstairs in the attic line that goes to a water fountain row. We had Charles Berry Gymnasium, one of the outside closets that houses one of the water heaters. Even though where there was a heater going in that closet, you have to have the return air ducts and fresh air ducts for the water heater to work properly. And pot still froze. Caught that real quick. We had a concession stand at the football field. Some pipes in the bathroom froze there. And then, of course, we had the activity center Christmas Eve morning. I'd like to thank Bailey, Tom's not here, and Michael. They all come in and helped and we got it all back, all the water vacuumed up that we could. And we had fans in-house that I can support Ser Pro users. And we immediately put the fans on it and had it drive in about three days. And it's been quite a bit of work trying to get it up and running before the ballgame last Friday night. But we were able to do that and I'm proud of that fact. Besides that, maintenance is pretty well staying par for the course. We've got statewide, we've been using School Dude, which is now Brightly. They changed companies. They, they have accepted a bid from Amazon Web Services that will be our new school work order maintenance for the, every school in the state. And that will roll over July first. We got word of that this last week. So got all of our inspections done before the end of the calendar year. Everything turned into the state, so we're all good on that. Intermediate school on the changeovers for the furnaces, we like three. The weather really hit 'em hard. It is, you can imagine trying to be up on a roof, putting a vent in on a roof, especially on a metal roof with twenty below. And so we didn't get quite as much done as what we'd hoped, but they've done a good job. The three will be done probably tomorrow. The three that's left are two in the cafeteria eating area and one in the kitchen. All the classrooms, it's done, heating and air both. So we're going to concentrate on middle school during spring break. So that's, that's where we're at right now.
The kitchens are doing good. For the first time in a long time, I can say we have full staff with one sub and then one student sub. It's working in the kitchen. But that's a blessing to me to be able to focus on more other stuff and not have to fill in so much. But we're working on getting first semester paperwork all turned in from all the ladies. And they're just excited to have a break during Christmas and they're ready to go again. And Nacho Day's coming up next Friday.
Cows!
If you guys are interested in coming visiting anywhere, but we're, we're doing good.
I wouldn't say we're full, but we're getting there. We've got a lady coming back this week. She's been automatically all year. We're, she's finally clear. We gotta get her training caught up this week and turn her loose. We got a couple more in the back burner. They're working on their license. So doing a lot better. Weather's cooperating right now. Cecil prices are not, they're getting worse, but they'll dip there in December, but it's all coming back together.
How, how many are we short still?
Still, I think if we get these two, the two that are working on their license right now, if they, we get them, we will be fully caught up. That'll be where I consider myself a sub again. A mechanic will be a sub again. And so we'll be up there.
I think Bailey likes to drive.
I think he does, too.
I have so much more of appreciation for him.
He has saved, him and Mr. Warren both have saved our butts. I don't know how he does it.
But I will say that that has been an amazing opportunity and has probably been one of the best things I've ever done to build positive relationships with our students. I thoroughly enjoyed that. Not necessarily the, the five AM getup, but it has definitely been rewarding. I've enjoyed it.
I know all of us appreciate greatly everybody that stepped up and served, just so we can get those kids here.
Yeah, if you ever want to open an experience, drive a school bus.
Or at least just ride on one.
It's a fact.
I'll sit in the back.
I want to kind of talk about Steve's head on just a minute ago. I want to give a shout out to Jeff Patrick, our maintenance guy, and Mr. Massey, our counselor. And Jeff's son Aaron, when that water pipe broke, they were up there mopping up water and they mopped for about three hours and took care of all of our leaks. And they jumped on it pretty quick to keep the damage, you know, as low as they could. And of course, it kind of bugged from one of the door jams in middle school. But Jeff is really crafty and he had that knocked out in about an hour and fixed and the door back on and everything working. So big shout out to those guys. We started off second semester last Tuesday with our PD. Had a good day. It's good to see the teachers back, rested, ready to jump into the second semester. We got a lot going on. We had a character rally for the elementary and our academic rally on Friday for our nine weeks in first semester on road, perfect attendance. This Thursday, we're going to have a reward breakfast for those kids. At the high school, there's about forty-five of them. That's going to be rewarded with breakfast in the cafeteria Thursday morning. We had our alumni panel today, something that Mr. Gregory's kind of taken over. And had a good day today. We have, you know, our alumni panel. We have St. Paul graduates that come in and talk about their job and qualifications. And we have our juniors and seniors once a month meet with them. So it was a good day. We got math testing coming up next three weeks. Tomorrow is K-2. Next week is our three-six and our seventh through tenth grade will be in two weeks. So we got a lot, you know, going on along with all the basketball games as well. And then in the high school, we got our career seminar Wednesday. That's where our ninth through twelfth grade kids will zoom in. Mr. Ledbetter's done a fantastic job of setting up our speakers and getting everything. Uh, Mr. Ledbetter's done a fantastic job of setting up our speakers and getting everything prepared. So, just a lot going on right now. Ready to get back into it and have a great semester.
And the reward, what's the reward for?
So, our kids that made, uh, the A B honor roll, all A honor roll and perfect attendance will be rewarded, um, uh, with pancakes and biscuits and gravy, uh, Thursday morning.
So, it's either or or both, right?
Both of them, yeah.
Oh, you had to have, you had to have good grades and?
No, no, I'm sorry, either or. You were correct. I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes.
He was thinking whether it's either or, biscuits or gravy.
Yeah, and it'll be both of those ways. Yes. Uh, we have a good staff, um, great group of teachers that helped me put this on. And, uh, so we'll be preparing Wednesday diet into Thursday morning for that. Um, you know, if our kids are watching, this is the first time they're hearing about it because we were going to tell them tomorrow. So, uh, if you're all invited, by the way, anybody want to show up at 7:30 at the library?
Well, if it's any, anything like last, last, uh, meeting with the tacos and stuff.
Well, I'm good for this one, so probably not.
I think I'll stay up here.
Well, the, the meeting last, you were very impressive, Sam Po. It was, it was.
Thank you.
It was great.
It was our pleasure to have everybody there.
Um, do you know, one of your goals was for improvement was to increase attendance. Obviously, the reward is part of that. Do you know, have you seen an increase in attendance?
Yes, ma'am, we have. Um, our numbers, our attendance, unexcused absences are down. Um, another thing that we do along with that is, and I picked this up from a Renaissance conference, once a week, I randomly go into the classrooms with some kind of breakfast snack. And I'll ask the teachers, "Is everybody here? Everybody on time? Everybody on task?" And if they are, take a snack. So, just, uh, you know, just something little that goes a long way. Doesn't cost a lot of money. So, uh, that's just something we kind of hit on. You know, you're always going to have those one or two kids that are chronically absent. Uh, but the goal was for the overall, and, and we're seeing it right now, so I hope it continues.
That's awesome.
Yep.
And, um, you created a room for the kids that were having, like, a meltdown, basically?
Absolutely.
And so, how's that going?
It's going really well. Um, matter of fact, uh, week before we got out, we had, uh, a couple of students utilize it at the high school. Had one utilize it last week on Thursday or Friday. Just, um, hey, you need a brain break, you're just overwhelmed, you're stressed, whatever. Uh, Ms. Huff, the librarian, is in there, Mr. Massey, the counselor's in there. And then if, if they're busy, I'll go in there and sit with them. Um, and we let the kids kind of be by themselves, but I'll be in the library area with them, so.
That's awesome.
Yep.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Hand it over to you.
Uh, one thing that Bailey didn't mention, um, the high school's getting new Chromebooks. So, we'll start distributing those tomorrow. Uh, so that's exciting. Uh, we, we do have welding classes up and running at the high school at the CTE building. So, we've got around 11 enrolled right now. His name's David Robinett. He's out of Berryville. He has a business on the side, so he's very accomplished welder.
Is he the one that sells the trailers and the truck beds and stuff over there?
I, I don't know. I'm sorry. I'll find out.
That's okay. I couldn't remember the guy's name.
He's got a bunch of brothers and sisters, so, uh, actually, I actually worked with his sister at Red Forest years ago. She teaches history over there. In addition to that, we have the fire cadet and EMS back to, to the CTE building. Uh, we should have around 10. Right now, we've got seven enrolled, but we look to have 10. And if we can raise our points, I don't know how that works exactly, but our percentage points of fire, uh, fire people, that fire workers, firemen, volunteers.
Yes, there we go.
We can, we can, um, lower the homeowners' insurance.
It's an ISO rating, you know?
Yes, so that's exciting. So, we've, we've got that going. Uh, we also have, again, we have the career seminar, uh, at the high school that, uh, Stetson's been working on really hard for that. Uh, we zoom in with those. That way, we can, we zoom with GrabIt and all different schools around. So, that's why we do it online. Also have a principals forum with selected kids, just to find out, you know, what's, what's good in the school? What do we need to fix? Uh, what do they, what they like about it, those types of things? Uh, how do new students see us? We do have, like, six new students at the high school. And then we also have a career fair on January 31st. This is after school. This is, we had the college fair in the fall. This is the career fair. We've got many businesses coming in to talk to kids about, uh, jobs with them. So, we've got that going. Also put on your calendar, May 18th is graduation in the arena, the activity center. Uh, we had a really good PD on January 3rd and Ms. Calmer was in attendance at that.
It was really good.
So, poverty, poverty awareness seminar, uh, the mayor was there, the county judge was there, the newspaper was there. Whitney, uh, was there, Ms. Calmer. Candace Samuel was there and then Latasha Blom from the, um, judge's office was also there. And then Color Day is January 27th. Busy January.
Mr. Dunlop, when is the St. Paul graduation?
Hold on just one second. It's the week before Roxanne's, I believe.
We did ours a week later than normal because we have issues with getting North Ark grades. And so, we, we decided to.
That and baseball, you know?
Yeah, and baseball. Always a, always a scare later.
It is May 12th, Friday night at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
So, that's, that's all I have. Oh, and then you'll see on the hires that I'm pretty proud of that too, so. Some new hires.
One of the goals that was for improvement was dealing with equity, equability with diverse students by setting and obtaining measurable goals. What goals did you set and where are we working?
Well, a lot of it is just getting them to read and to understand what we're reading, make them feel comfortable. And we do have a large population there. So, with that, I've included two, uh, minority students in that principals forum, so we can hear, hear from them. We, you know, our, we, instead of going to the RTI classes out, they actually get, like, double dosage there in the classroom with our PSL lady or educator. So, we're assisting one there. Uh, we hired Rachel Jackle, I hope you remember her, as a, as an interpreter. She actually, as, first day of work, we already used her, so she was helping interpret there, so.
I thought she went into the service?
Uh, she did, but there were some.
Okay, so she's back and so she's been helping us out.
It's hard for me to put my brain back into she's an, she's an educator and not a student. And I see her and I, and it, it plays with my mind a little bit.
She was one of my homeroom kids for, I took her until they graduated.
And she looks just like them, so it's hard to.
She's a great kid.
She's so young.
Have you got an instructor hired for your firefighter EMT classes?
Yeah, we, we, yes, it's a, it's a contracted labor. It's the bargain.
He's been doing it long enough here to know how to teach it.
Well, he did teach it in the high school when we had it.
Yes.
As part of the curriculum.
I would say he's been doing it forever.
Yeah, and that's why I think we ended up with the two young guys that are out at the news station is because they've gone through that program.
And they're, they are going to assist as well. And then Todd, Chief Todd Thomas asked about helping out there a little bit. So, we've got, we can incorporate that in there as well, so, which would help the county too. And then the, the welding instructor was hired by NWTI, so he's, he's not actually through those. And then, of course, we've got CNA. That building will be full, uh, 100% full, 50% of the tape, and then 50% full in the afternoon.
Good.
Uh, we had a good start back at, uh, middle school, uh, last Tuesday. We also had our teacher training, had, had good, uh, training with teachers and staff, good conversations about curriculum, students. And our teachers had a chance to analyze the map data, so it felt like that was good. Uh, as I told you last board meeting, recently, we received two awards. Uh, the Office of Educational Policy Award in U of A for high overall growth in the ACT Aspire. And a Move Towards Excellence Award on the Schools Report Card. And to celebrate, we're going to take all the kids ice skating this month, uh, at the Jones Center. I'm not ice skating, I'm a super athlete, so you know.
She's taking the ninth grade.
Yeah, I'm taking the ninth grade. It's current seventh through ninth grade. Seventh grade will go on the 18th, eighth grade on the 20th, and ninth grade on the 23rd. So, we're excited about that.
Are we insured for that or are you making them sideways?
He's promised me no blood on the ice.
That's a big promise. A bunch of red things in there, ice skate.
The teachers at the intermediate school hit the, hit the ground running Tuesday when we came back. We had the successful professional development. Um, also, um, we dove into our essential standards, uh, with an understanding of what each standard means. Um, and we're correlating our essentials with our, our textbooks, our reading and math textbooks that we have, uh, trying to get all that bridge together and figure out when essentials should be taught and how they should be taught and an understanding of what they look like when they are taught. Um, we're having our second quarter awards day on, uh, January the 20th. And we also have map testing. It's, uh, tomorrow's math and then we have literacy on Thursday.
Um, in, last year, and I know, because you're trying to really improve your school, it said, um, last year it said that there was no training in PLC or, some of the teachers, many of them, it said. Many didn't have training in PLC or RTI, um, to help, you know, improve the scores. What have you done so far this year with that? Was it mostly summer or bright and forceful?
Well, we started in the summer. We had three days in the summer where we worked and really dove into PLCs and what, what they look like and what they are. Uh, so, and then weekly, we have meetings and the, the newer teachers are in with the veteran teachers. And so, there's, there's an understanding of what they are. So, the veterans are guiding the younger teachers into what the process is. With this, with, and which ties into the work we did on Tuesday, where we were pulling out the standards and really looking to see that the essentials is what we really wanted to, to concentrate on and what we wanted to develop. Uh, and the, uh, we took it and we broke, broke them into, uh, grade level groups, managed math and literacy. And they looked at the essentials and we came back together as a whole school. And we looked at bridging it from third through fifth, all the way through to see if third was tying into fourth and fourth was tying into fifth.
Were you able to pinpoint a few weak places and?
We, we readjusted and we're doing fine now, yeah.
That's awesome.
We had to re- reduce some of the ways or some of the layout of the books of where they're being taught, um, so that we were aligned and we got what we needed to get. So, we've, the teachers have done a great job in looking at that. And we had some, we had some good discussions and some pretty serious talks, uh, in the building. Um, and so now, it's continued, it's not an ending work. We're going to continue that work, uh, because now we're going to develop, um, CFAs, Common Form Assessments, so that we can see if they're acquiring the knowledge and the skills that we're looking to teach. Um, and then we'll, um, go from there and adjust. And because we want to make sure we know what we're talking about in each, each essential that we're looking at. We want to make sure that each teacher understands what it looks like when they've mastered that, that skill.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Teachers do a great job.
If you've not had a chance to sit in one of their PLCs, it gives you a little bit of information.
It really does.
The teachers are doing day in and day out.
Yeah, it really does. It is eye opening. Thank you. They work hard. They work very hard.
They were sitting there eating their lunch and still working through the, the kids, so.
Um, not much. Auditors do arrive on site tomorrow. And, um, we've got them in office space back there, but they'll be housed in.
Is it small?
So, they want to. Well, it's pretty small.
And cold.
Exactly. Don't give them rain there.
Yeah. Don't give me too many. Um, we're busy rolling the calendar year right now. There's things you have to do at the, um, calendar year just because of taxes. So, Mary and Ladonna and myself and Shannon were kind of working on that. And, um, also proceeding on with the bank change. Not much has changed there yet, but, but it's, it's in the works, so, so anyway, that's where we're at.
I'm proud, she brought it up, honestly.
And she didn't start off, she's bringing the belt.
Somebody would ask if I didn't. She beats to it, yeah.
I feel like mine's just same old, same old, just working on numbers, looking at budgets, um, finishing up for the end of the year and, um, special education.
It's never ending. Well, I'm super excited when you get down further in the agenda. We have, uh, people in spots in every disposition now. So, very happy about that. We have some that.
Long-term planning, that's, that's great.
Yes, some of them are very, very new to the spread world, but that's okay because we will work with them and get them going. But very excited, we have a new pair of two new teachers coming, just in recommend, being recommended tonight. And then I wanted to tell, um, I have someone that has been pursuing a job, but she can't come until next year. She lives in South Arkansas. She saw the opening, she's been asking about, you know, when she could interview and everything. And then she, um, a couple of emails later, she sent me another one and she said, "And do you think there's any possibility that you can get in touch with the transportation? Because I would love to drive a bus."
We just got here each month.
I said, "I think I can help you out with that," so.
Yes, I'll say it's possible.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much a given if you want to drive a bus, so.
She's interesting.
Yeah. Does she have any family members on?
I don't know. Tell her to bring them on with her, so. Um, we finally have got state approval for some adaptive playground equipment that we have been working on for about 18 months now.
That's amazing.
It takes a long time. I know it sounds crazy, like, how hard can it be to get a swing? But it, you have to go through lots of hoops. But we did get that approved and now we're waiting for them to give us an invoice so we can pay. So, we're getting closer. And then, um, at PD, I think the high school was the last to wrap up, uh, crisis prevention, um, intervention, crisis preventive, what am I trying to say? Intervention, uh, CPI is what we call it. But, uh, we've got that, all the campuses are trained with that now. It is a requirement, it's very important. And just a shout out to Coach Williams, Matt Williams. I heard he did an excellent job, very much by the book. And, um, participants were just saying how much they learned and how thorough and how much he knew his stuff. So, that made me happy to hear, so.
And I want to say too, high school, we have 58% of the faculty and staff CPR, card carrying certified. So, the goal is to get 100%. And 100% of our seniors will be CPR certified, card carrying before they graduate.
So, on that, can you make sure they actually get their cards?
Yes.
Because I've had several come to, and they can't ever get their cards.
Okay.
So, all come through the process of.
They're online.
Printing off their cards. Because they're like, "I don't know how to get to my card."
Okay, well, make sure.
Thank you. So, but it's helpful for employers.
Yes.
And a prime example, CPR, for instance, was last Monday night.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I'm excited. I've, it's, it's required that they are aware of CPR, but I actually, like, don't get a card because that's just something that I want them to do. And I don't, unless they're watching this.
It's not a bad thing, it's a good thing. Everybody, everybody should know how to do it.
Yes.
Whether you're certified or not, you should know how to do it.
A lot of ma, or a lot of, uh, employers, they require it.
Well, wherever, say, in Arkansas, for daycare, everybody in a daycare has to have CPR.
I know most construction companies, they, they require you to have it. Last one out, please.
I don't have to make Bailey even mine, because she's last. Um, okay, well, I feel like I just say ditto. And PD day also at Watson Primary was very successful. Got some great feedback from the staff. And, um, I also got some good feedback about their needs and wants for, um, our March session and then summer session, so I'm excited about that. And last week, we, our fourth pre-K classroom started officially. So, those, um, we'll have 70 on our site. Um, so, I'm just very thankful to Ms. Carrie for kind of doing all the legwork with the state. Um, and then Ms. Cantrell, who stepped into that role. So, um, it's going very smoothly. Um, few tears first day, but, um, the best day ever is what I heard in the afternoon, so. Um, Friday, we had our Eagle Rally that kicked off, um, January in our semester. And I just have to, uh, thank Ashley Davidson, our counselor, who always does a great job of looking for folks to bring in from the community. She brought in Mr. Dale Tabor. I don't know if you saw it on Facebook or have heard his story, but, um, he is an elder gentleman who was. but he is an elder gentleman who was left a paraplegic after a car accident when he was 21. But he was already a gifted painter and art major in school and didn't let that stop him. And still creates beautiful paintings using his mouth. And so just a story of how what makes you unique makes you amazing and, you know, to not let that hold you back, whatever that is. And so we had that, like Mr. Kane and the other campuses. Our winter maps assessment window opened last week. So throughout the month, ours aren't scheduled days. Our teachers just have that flexibility to do it on a day that all the kids are there that day and they can just go ahead and they test in their classrooms. So that will be going on. So hopefully get you some updated numbers on how we're looking toward that literacy goal, raising that 5%. And then 100th day in kindergarten, that's a huge deal, January 26th. So you'll hear some information about that. If snow stays away, which 60 degrees tomorrow usually means by the end of the week, we're 10 feet into snow. So who knows? And so that's coming up. And then just because the other two mentioned graduation, we will have kindergarten graduation on May 23rd. And it will also be at the new activity center. So we're excited to be able to have one ceremony in one location and mark your calendars.
Little Eagles.
I had just a couple of things that I wanted to point out and bring up. You know, the activity center didn't have the issue over the, over the Christmas break. And I would like to, you know, we had, we had quick response by our fire department and by our four, four gentlemen who came in and cleaned it up very quickly. You know, Steve and Michael and Tom and Bailey were on the spot after, after being notified and saved the floor. There's no other way to put it. It could have been much worse. And if you saw what happened at Little Rock AULR, that's what we were looking at if they hadn't been out there. So I greatly appreciate their quick response, for sure. And with that, the fire department as well, for sure. They, they came out, shut the water off and.
So is there an alarm that's got everybody's number in it or a series of numbers in it? It should start calling quick as it flashes?
It does.
Do we have a company or what that calls us like an alarm?
Yes to both. Yes to both. It notifies, you know, police chief, it notified Bailey. I don't know that it notified everybody that it does now, but, or that it will. But it notified people in, to be able to respond.
So how long did the water run before the first notification went out?
As soon as that fire panel is activated, the alarm went off.
What we've got, Steve, in that, in that activity center, it's kind of unique. It's got a sprinkler system on the lower deck and the upper deck.
Right.
And those have got a flow sensor in those lines. And as soon as that started flowing water, the alarm went off, just like that. And there's also an outside stroke that alerts anybody going by, hey, something's wrong. And it doesn't sound, but it strokes. And but as soon as that flow started going off, people called.
Well, should we like put something out? So if anybody happens to send, doesn't have a clue why that's going off, they might call and question it? I mean, is there somewhere we can put it there? But I'm talking about somebody driving by and sees that light flashing.
If they see that light flashing, we should already.
You are going, okay, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's instantaneous.
All right. So they go through the same thing at the same time.
So, but we lost amount of water by the time that it struck, that went off until the fire chief got off Governor's Hill. And he was on the phone with me and I walked him through how to shut the water off in the building. So that's, it could have been a lot worse.
Approximately how many gallons of water got on the floor? Any idea?
On the floor itself?
Yeah, they come out into the, not on the floor, into the building.
No, but Sean at the water company is looking into that. There's really no way of knowing because we don't have any historical data, since it is a new building.
Right.
That we couldn't look back at this time last year, how much did we use and get a good estimate? But he's going to adjust and they're really good to work with. I want to give a shout out to Huntsville Water. All, all three that happened here in Huntsville, they are adjusted to their force for the water lost.
I've got a deal on my chicken houses. If the water line blows, the water pressure will shut off.
Right.
Is there something available for that or is it because of the fire? Because I don't have it.
You can't put that in a fire expression.
Okay. I'm just, just wondering.
Because that water's cold because there's, there's something going on.
Because of the fire, yes.
So there's no shut off for that.
And Macy Campbell, and I forgot to mention her, and Tyler Brown. Macy's cousin is, works on the, he's one of the police officers. And as soon as he got the call, he called Macy. Macy actually beat me there. And she had took towels, her and Tyler, and put it as you go through the tunnel coming out on the floor. And that helped a bunch. It actually stopped the flow of water. And of course, the water was shut off and then we worked about getting it. But I want to give a shout to them. They came and they helped also.
Yep. Bailey, are we going to be able to hook up that so it goes, an alarm goes to the dispatch too?
Yes, yeah, we discussed it and I believe we have a plan in place for it. But I mean, everything worked like it was supposed to on our end as far as the notification and monitoring. And we have that at all of our buildings. We have our notification system tied into the fire panels. So anytime that fire panel is activated, the building administration gets one, the district administration, our fire chief, and now we're, we are looking at tying in dispatch. The only thing we need to make sure on our end is that we notify them properly if any drills or anything like that don't have false alarms. That would, that's the only hesitation I have.
Yeah, you get a lot of false alarms from these alarm companies when you're a deputy, don't you?
Is there anything that could be done to help prevent that in the future? I don't know exactly where it was at in that building, but.
It was an installation error.
Yeah, as soon as you walk in the front door, right? Right. So if you walk in those two doors closest to the ticket booth, you look straight up at that first sprinkler. It was right there.
So did it freeze or was it a bad thought?
The official report from the fire marshal is faulty fitting. And so it is my contention that it, that it, where it was at is 12 feet from the outside wall. It's the furthest sprinkler from the northwest corner of the building where the, all the coldest air was. That it was a faulty fitting. The fitting did not show any signs of swelling or cracking. It just pulled apart. If you're familiar with how sprinkler, it's one of those flexible stainless steel lines.
Big tallak or whatever it's called. It's got the tubes in it.
It just pulled apart.
It's got like a little rubber gasket there and then it clamps it together.
So.
We're working with CR Crawford Insurance and the installer to rectify as well. On all, on all given scenario, you know, monetary and.
Well, hopefully.
Because there was a, there was a natural prior gas problem about that time too. Because Butterball was shut down. And I just wanted to, we have.
Butterball was shut down because they were curtailed.
Well, yeah, but I thought it was a gas flow, natural gas flow. I just wondered if we lost gas flow.
No.
And that's what, it froze. We need to talk to Black Hills Energy too.
No, the, the thermostats were all set and the heat was working.
Good deal. I figured that.
Yeah. And we had all of our thermostats, especially on newer buildings, on Bluetooth that we can actually pull it up, pull it up on our iPhone and pull that thermostat up and see what it's set at and see if it's on or if it's not.
Last thing I had, just for information, was Integrity is working through the buildings. That's the company that's doing the energy audits right now. They started with a kind of a walkthrough last week. And then they're coming to do a little bit more in-depth, detailed work this week. So they'll be in and out of the buildings, but they know the process to follow to check in and check out. They'll finish tomorrow. Finish tomorrow?
Yes.
No, it's still, it's detailed, but it's quick. But they are there.
And so will that be ready by next meeting?
No, no, it'll take a while.
It'll take a while for them to compile the numbers?
I don't know.
I think they'll have April?
Yeah, they'll have final recommendations to us by April, is what they.
Well, I mean, after they get this done, this part of it done, is that when they start bidding everything out?
Or? No, that's, this is when they do, like, they, they start looking at what is going to be able to be cost efficient, what the savings will be to us and, no. So that, short answer is no, they're not bidding out anything at this point. Not even until weeks ago and after April.
And they're still in the design phase on the software aspect and all of that, so.
Okay. Moving on to new business. There's, there's no action to be taken on these two items, but they are for your information. And one was recommended by auditor after our initial meeting. We have, you know, disclosures are set up through, through the State Department, through ADE to notify public entities through set guidelines of, you know, business, business interactions that you have with, with people who potentially have a relationship within the school or with the school. And we look back and we had, we had one on file. We had one that is in process. So I've brought you the one that is on file and then we're reevaluating the one that was in process. If that one needs to come for you, then I'll bring it to you next month. The one that was on file is the Yates Lawn. And that was set in, in 2020. It was, that was, that did go through a bidding process at that time. This was the lowest bid. We, you know, there, there was board approval for it. The auditor just said, since, since you have a new board, they need to be aware of this forum to do that. So if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer them.
Is this something we're just going to roll over year to year or are we going to try to bid it out every year?
We, we haven't, and I'll let Steve speak to that, but we haven't bid it out since.
We haven't, we haven't bid it out since then. Because to be quite honest, we did, they were about half again is, is what the next bid was. I mean, we can, we can bid it out if that's what the board chooses to do. He does a fantastic job and.
No, yeah, I just, I'm not saying anything bad about Cole because he, he does great.
Yeah, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it for that.
I was looking at the numbers the other day when it extended to me. I'm like, I wouldn't even touch it.
No, is that, that high school alone, that seven acres of high school?
He is just doing the mowing though, right?
He's mowing and the weed eating.
Okay. Who was in charge for the landscaping?
The use of the teachers or the campus itself.
Because I'm not trying to be mean or anything, but a lot of the times our, appearance of our buildings is pathetic, just being honest.
Yeah, we don't have a professional landscaper that we have hired.
I'm not saying anything about, about the teachers or what they're doing. I, I don't want to sound like that. I'm just saying that I, I got it brought to my attention, I don't know how many times, of just me personally looking at it. But whenever kids were, you're coming back to school and you see all these pictures posted on Facebook of kids starting school and having all these, you know, posts on Facebook of them with their parents or whatever, you know, back to school. And then you see the kind of not so nice campuses that we've got. What, what can we do to help with that?
Whose role is that?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Well, Mrs. Cotton at the high school a few years ago started putting stuff out because she didn't really have any permission. She just randomly started putting stuff that then leads to you need to have shrubbery trimmed. And who's going to do the shrubbery trimming and is that what we really wanted there?
It also led to building deterioration of where she put it.
Oh, yeah.
And water, water got up into the classrooms and started deteriorating the cinder blocks.
Right. Well, I mean, what, what are other school districts doing?
They usually have landscapers on staff.
Okay. Then that's, I'm asking questions. Like, I don't know.
Or they, or they.
I just know that I, I, you know, out of the many phone calls that I've, you know, taken, that's a lot of it, especially at the start of the school year.
See, our maintenance guys are also doing our, the mowing that Yates doesn't do, which is about 14 acres.
Okay.
They do each campus, they do their own campus. And to be quite honest, you know, that, that's a pretty, pretty good job in the summer and the spring of the summer. And we don't know beans, I'll just be honest, I don't know beans about landscaping. I mean, I can mow somebody's yard and train it and weed it and blow it off. But as far as making it look good, you know, my eyes not as good as somebody else's.
I, I get that. I just, I mean, if, if other school districts are doing it, why aren't we? And what, what do we need to do to make it happen? What can we do? I mean, is it a weekend that we all come up and we help? I mean, I'd be more than happy to help. I just, our kids deserve better than what they've had.
Well, I just think that that would be a great thing for East to do, not necessarily go out and physically do the landscaping necessarily, but to do the planning. What would go well there, what's, you know, drought resistant, won't need a lot of water, doesn't need a lot of maintenance, you know, that, that would be excellent because that's what they're supposed to be doing either.
Yeah, they cleaned up the courtyard when we were preparing that for springing. So they've got the courtyard almost flawless at this point.
Yeah, but I don't really think that's probably East focus is to like be maintenance people. Their focus is the planning and the, the budgeting and that sort of thing. And then make a presentation and, and put it out. So that's what we need to probably look, maybe.
Is that something we can put in, I mean, in motion? I mean.
We have a transition program in the special education department where we have students looking for employment. They would need some leadership with that, but it's a grant that pays them actual salary. And I mean, if it's something that the East had directions on how to do, then we have, we would have some resource, human resource to.
Great.
I'd like to say so, but I, I took pictures of our elementary, yeah, before school started this year back in June, July and went down to our local place down in Clarksville and showed them the picture and what I was wanting to do. And I tell you, the big part of it was the expense. I didn't realize what it was going to cost me just to put some plants out. And then, of course, I got to talking with Jeff and then we got, like Steve said, well, Bruce, if we put water up here, now we got to worry about, you know, excess water and going. So I just kind of put it on the back burner until I got some more information about it. But for me, it was the biggest expense. That's what it was. It's why I did it because I was going to do it on my own pocket. But it was going to end up being four or $500 for me to take care of lower, upper in the high school and do what I want to do.
Right.
Anything that we do right now, a big shout out to Mr. Trey in his environmental science class, they take care of that stuff for us as kind of community outreach and things like that. So he does some landscaping stuff for, for us, but nothing on the scale of what you're talking about. But I'm, I'm with you. I would, I definitely, and I know everybody else does too, we would love to have something.
I mean, I'm not talking about putting, you know, gentle gardens in, in where, you know, but I mean, we could spruce it up a little bit. I mean.
And that was, that was my thing. Like you said, it was back to school pictures, families were coming in, wanted to have it jazzed up, but.
Well, we have the master gardeners who could also work because I know when East is doing a project, they reach out to people and so that they could work with the master gardeners.
Big decision on this too. Big decision on this one's there as well, if you're 4H. Jeremy Edwards would be a good contact for that.
Sounds like, I mean, we've, we've got a good start despite, I mean.
And we will put that into action for East. That's not an issue. It's, like you said, money and different.
Yeah.
Which I'm sure there are some grants, but.
I'm sure there's probably some public donation too that we could, we could ready, you know. I mean, there's a lot of folks that their kids go to this school that would, you know, be.
Plant a tree program, they could plant a push.
Exactly. And like I said, I'd be more than happy to come up and volunteer and do what I need to do. We want to do it on a weekend or have an afternoon in summer, whatever we need to do. I just, I, I'd like to, you know, next year when I pull up Facebook and you get all these kids going back to school, I'd like to have some nice picture.
I do.
What a good power washing, especially that middle school. I don't know why that court.
The high school needs it too. It's got some like industrial stuff.
And I agree with Steve. Cole Yates does an excellent job because till he started, it was hit and miss. They were coming when kids were actually out there and they're not supposed to be there then.
Right.
And it, yeah, it was not good. So I, I'm afraid we won't be able to keep him.
I talked to him the other day, asked if he was still interested in doing it. He said, yes. And so he's giving a look at his prices. Of course, if you, if you raise his prices, well, somebody will back out the fitting, right?
Yeah.
How many, you know, off talking about how many interested parties you had in the bid process last time?
Three.
Three. So it was a lot better than what the HVAC system was then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And probably, how many of those were in Madison County?
The, the three that bid it?
Did you have?
All three of them were in Madison County.
Oh, okay.
Nobody outside Madison County bid it.
Oh, okay.
It's not the acreage involved, it's the terrain.
Yes, yes.
Besides mountains.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, if it was flat, everybody would want to do it.
Second item on new business is, this is an annual training report that has to be done through law 613, 629. And it's pretty regulated on how it's laid out and how you have to report it. So the way that you have it there, four columns with number of training hours earned between this calendar, the last calendar year. So the way that you have it there, four columns with number of training hours earned between this calendar, the last calendar year, the number of training hours that can be carried over. And these are all just ASBA, Arkansas School and Order Association. So this is what has been listed out through that. And then the sum of those hours and then the total number of training hours required to receive. And then you see the date that I added in there in parentheses of when you have to have to have those earned. So all of the new board members basically have till December of 2023. This calendar is next to this calendar year now that we're in to get their nine hours that you have to have as an initial board member.
Honestly, I'm a achiever.
Well, I went to that safety assessment that with Mr. Warren.
Oh, okay.
So that was, it was very good.
And I will say that if you, you know, as we talked a little bit about, you know, the training that is coming up and there's one in February in Little Rock that is also virtual.
I want to do that virtual.
If you, you just need to email me or contact me somehow and I'll set, you know, we'll get you enrolled whichever route you want to go, onsite or virtual, and we'll take care of it. Moving on to transfer requests. Initially, when I sent it out initially, we didn't have any and then we had two or three that came in. So I would entertain a motion to accept the transfer request as presented.
Do you have any questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
My second is.
Second by Connie. All in favor?
Okay, next is personnel. We have a few resignations or hires and transfers, but I would entertain a motion for personnel as well.
Are there any questions overall personnel?
Is this Melissa Watkins or Melissa Watkins that was here? Okay.
No further questions, I'll take a motion to.
I'll make a motion.
First. In a second, all in favor?
Okay, reading the personnel. Resignations, Lynetta Willis, HMS ELA teacher, 1323. Classified resignations, Melissa Rodriguez, WPS ALA paraprofessional, 1623. Kendra Stroud, trial and nutrition, 11422. Manuel Mercado, interpreter translator, 1223. Blaine Bowen, athletic custodial, 1323. Tiffany Gullidge, St. Paul custodial, 11923. Hire certified, Melissa Watkins, HMS ELA teacher, 190 day contract of 1323. Cynthia Whitmore, HHS special education teacher, 11023. And that's for the remainder of this school year. Classified Teresa Del Carme Romero, lead better, HIS food service, 180 day contract, 11023. And Christina Slay, HHS special education paraprofessional, 185 contract, day contract, 11023. Transfers, none in certified and a classified, Blanca Bryant, Watson Primary Custodial, 245 day contract to St. Paul Custodial, 185 day contract on 11623. Donna Janeway, HIS food service to HMS food service, 11023. Turn it over to you.
All right, we are now going to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
And have them back from executive session. Of course, no action was taken in executive session. We are going to do a further evaluation in June. So something else that has transpired, we now have a vacancy on the school board.
School Board Zone Two.
School Board Zone Two, not the other one. To please email myself or Mr. Warren and we will make a decision within 30 days. We've got two weeks. We would like to reconvene. I need a calendar. We'll have a special meeting Monday, the 23rd. Right with everybody?
Should be good.
Should be.
Monday, the 23rd at 5:30 to make a decision on our placement for Zone Two. So please let us know if you are interested in that position at that time.
Can they work in the school, be on the school board?
No.
Do you know of anybody that lives in that area? I have them.
That area is...
I don't know. Earl Wesley.
Japtin.
Yeah.
Like South Island.
Nixon Wesley.
Yes.
It borders me over there.
Wall and Waller Street. Waller Street.
Yeah, yeah. It's weird.
Runs to Congress.
It's really weird.
It's weird. Because, yeah, y'all live around the...
Last house in Zone.
But two is between where I live and where you live. Like, I don't know how, I don't know how it works.
Is that from resignation? All right. If there are no further comments, questions, or discussion items?
I think you'll find more than one will be interested in that. The board will consider each and all.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. So if there's nothing else, make motion to adjourn. Chairs are empty. Second... Josh, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you all.